Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council for Tuesday, May 15th, 2018. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We did meet in closed session just prior to this for the items listed on our special closed-session agenda. Please roll call, Clerk.
Councilmember Dorman?
Here.
Councilmember Moller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Doran Becker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here.
Please let the record reflect that Councilmember Durham is excused.
Thank you. And before we move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm sure many, if not all of you, have heard that we lost one of our longtime residents in Yountville. Lee Hart passed away very recently, and so we'd like to please invite all of you to share in a moment of silence in Lee's memory. Thank you, and please keep Kristy and Liz and the rest of the family in your thoughts and prayers. Mr. Hall, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Next up, adoption of our agenda for tonight. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Michelle, it looks like it might be working. Please vote.
(inaudible).
Almost. Pretty sure that was unanimous.
It was unanimous.
All right, we're going to go with that.
Clicked it before it was ready.
All right. All right, we're going to move ahead to our first proclamation for this evening, declaring May 20th through the 26th National Public Works Week. We have a few of our local public works folks here in the audience who would please join me at the podium, and I can present this proclamation.
(inaudible).
I know it always takes a lot to get you guys in here, but we enjoy it when you do. Come on over here. I'm not as scary as town manager, so I hope. This recognizes May 2018 as National Public Works Month, whereas public work services provided in the town of Yountville are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of Town of Yountville Public Works Systems and Programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. Whereas the health, safety, and comfort of the Town of Yountville greatly depends on these facilities and services. Whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the Town of Yountville Public Works staff. Whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Town of Yountville Public Works Department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor of the Town of Yountville, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th through the 26th, 2018, as National Public Works Month. Wait a minute, we're going to do a week and a month. A special week and the entire month. There we go. As the Mayor of the Town of Yountville, I call upon all of our citizens and civic organizations in the Town of Yountville to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Gentlemen, thank you very much. (applause) Joe, back there. Come on up here, Joe. We need you for the photo. Let's turn this way. We've got photographer back here. If any one of you would like to comment?
(inaudible) without stellar leadership from the council and Steve and Joe, we can't do our job, and we just thank you guys for that.
Thank you very much. Larry, never make a public elected official you talk too short when you get a microphone. You don't ramble or anything, just get to it, right to it. Next up, a proclamation recognizing May also as Building and Safety Month. I believe we have Rick. There's Rick. Rick Walters representing us as our building inspector. Please, Rick, if you would come join us. Join me. Welcome.
Thank you.
This is to proclaim May 2018 also as Building Safety Month, whereas the Town of Yountville recognizes that our economic strength, health, and welfare depend on the safety and value of the homes, businesses, and infrastructure that serve our citizens and visitors, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And whereas the Town of Yountville historically has proven its commitment to building safety through projects such as the Town Hall Seismic retrofit project and others. Whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of the buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devoted, the devotion of building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, and others in the construction industry. And whereas these dedicated professionals are members of the International Code Council, a U.S.-based organization that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, and play. Whereas the Town of Yountville benefits economically and technologically from using international codes, avoiding the high cost of developing and maintaining widely-adopted building safety and fire prevention codes that provide safeguards from natural disasters such as wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. Whereas Building Safety Month 2018 with the theme "Building Codes Save Lives" is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical roles our community's code officials play to assure us a safe, efficient, and livable environment. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, John F. Dunbar, as Mayor of the Town of Yountville, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as Building Safety Month in the Town of Yountville. Thanks very much. (applause) Where is she? She is. Now she's over here. She's keeping us guessing. Thank you very much. If you'd like to share any thoughts?
Just a few quick words. Over the last 30 years, I've worked in probably 23 jurisdictions, subbing off and on. This is the best one I've ever worked in. You have a good staff, the citizens are great, and you care about the people here, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Rick. (applause) I'm pretty sure most of this half of the room is here for our next one, and this is a great joy for me and the council as a whole to be able to do this, Sharon, so if you would please join me up here so we can recognize you and the Yountville Sun celebrating your 20th anniversary. Congratulations. I didn't say anything yet.
I love you anyway.
Oh, thank you. This proclamation is recognizing Sharon Stensis and the Yountville Sun's 20th anniversary. Where, now, some of this stuff, I have, you know, well, sure, we made it up, but some of it, you said it, so you can't go back on it now. Whereas Cal State Northridge Journalism graduate Sharon Stensis, having successfully launched two award-winning small-town newspapers in Colorado, moved to Yountville with her husband, Oscar Rhodes, in January 1998. Whereas Sharon and Oscar fulfilled a dream when they published the first edition of the Yountville Sun on May 14th, 1998, from the dining room of their home on Stags View Lane. Whereas with Oscar as president and advertising director, and Sharon serving as editor and publisher, the first edition included contributions from familiar folks, including Lou Jefferson, Eric Housley, Steve Zanatell, and the mysterious Colonel Mustard. Many other local writers and supporters have helped to enrich the Yountville Sun experience over the years. Whereas in response to early skeptics who questioned the need for a local paper, Sharon said, "The news will make itself, but don't worry, it will be free fish wrap if that's what it's good for." You remember that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Whereas through floods, earthquakes, fires, blackouts, and other significant breaking news, the Yountville Sun has greeted us consistently every week in our mailboxes, except for the one week in March 2013, following the passing of the original paper boy, Oscar Rhodes. Whereas for 20 years, Sharon tirelessly has brought us news, human-interest stories, editorials, business updates, and much more that range from the serious to the endearing to the humorous. Sharon earned the respect and devotion of current and former residents, as well as visitors, because she has represented our Yountville community with integrity, compassion, and heartfelt dedication. Whereas Sharon has expressed that she and the Yountville Sun have never wavered from the original mission to provide a free, community-focused newspaper that, another quote, I hope, "mirrors Yountville and its surroundings by accurately reflecting its character, conscience, changes, successes, and failures in a timely, objective, intelligent, and sensitive manner." Whereas Sharon was recognized as the 2018 Yountville Chamber of Commerce Small Business of the Year and is our champion, our neighbor, and our friend. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, John F. Dunbar, on behalf of the entire Yountville Town Council and community, congratulate you, Sharon Stensis and the Yountville Sun, on its 20th anniversary, and we offer our best wishes for continued success. (applause)
Thank you very much. As I look around the room, none of you were here 20 years ago.
I was.
I was.
Not in the seats, you're not.
Out of the seats, right.
And that's a good sign. It's a good sign of a vital and vibrant democracy and a well-run town. I think probably the only thing to question is why I'm here 20 years later. You have all new technology, all new ways of doing things, but basically, your jobs are very much the same, to listen to people, to make, to discuss, to debate, and make decisions, and they're not always easy. I've seen that. I've seen some really interesting and heartfelt debates in this room. I've seen tears, I've seen laughter, I've seen frustration, I've seen joy, and most of it is pretty interesting, and there's sometimes when it's excruciatingly boring. I have to tell you, that just happens. It's, I mean, all of government isn't all that interesting. And I remember one night, when seated where Sandy Fagan is right now, there was a gentleman from the home named Lionel Hovold, and he was here attending the meeting on behalf of the Allied Council. I got a little bit past his bedtime, and he fell asleep and started to snore just a little bit, but it was loud enough to prompt the mayor to ask the person next to him to wake him up. And I can say that only, that's only happened to me one time while I was watching the meeting at home, now that you have this technology that allows me to do that. So I try not to let that happen too often. I also want to acknowledge the town staff. You should be very proud, and I know you are, of your town manager and the town staff that he has assembled. They make my job a lot easier because they are so available and accessible and so honest with me. I work with all of you, Michelle, and Joe, and Sandra, and Sam, and I don't know Maria that well because she doesn't spend as much money as the others do. She just kind of gathers and keeps track of it. This has meant a lot to me, this proclamation and this celebration of 20 years, because we've been through, I mean, we've been through a horrific seven months, and so I think it's very important for all of us to find in our own lives the milestones and the things that we can be grateful for to help us move forward from where we've been. So thank you again very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. (applause) Yes, of course.
When I hear you sometimes say, "Oh, I wonder if Sharon got the idea."
I believe you. We always feel your eyes on us, Sharon, don't worry. Thank you very much for your thoughtful words as well. And there goes our crowd.
The good part's over.
That's right. Sharon has a good excuse, she's going to go home and work on the newspaper. Thank you all very much. Hey, Bill, you can stay. It's like old time.
(inaudible) people say a few words about Sharon.
Bill, say something about Sharon.
I will do that.
Sharon, don't leave.
In fact, Sharon, you're back here.
We're going to, actually, let's do this, Bill.
I don't want to pull ranker.
Bill, no. Bill, before you start, we're going to move on to our public comment.
My name is Bill Dutton, 65, 64, whatever.
Our public comment portion of the night. Our first public comment, Bill Dutton.
Do I have name and all that stuff?
We already got you, we'll find you.
You got it, okay. No, I'd be remiss if I didn't say a few things about Sharon, because given those dates, I came to town probably six months before Sharon did, and as you all know, she's a very easy person to get to know, to talk to, and we struck up a, you know, just nice conversation about things and what have you, and obviously enjoyed reading the paper. Then one day, probably three or four years later after it started, Eric Housley got ahold of me and said, "Jeez, I've been writing this sports section, but the kids are young and this and that," and he said, "Would you have any interest in doing it?" And I said, "Well, I like sports, but I'm not too good a writer, I'll tell you that." He said, "Well, I don't think you have to be with this paper," but, no, no. He said it's on the job train. So in any event, I did it, and I, and at the time, as Chair mentioned, there was, you had Lou Jefferson writing this, other people writing things, and I did that, and then obviously things got a little busy after a while, and I thought, boy, I gotta cut back here. So I told Sharon, I said, "You know, I, I think at the time I was on the council, I was doing a lot of stuff," and I said, "I just don't have time for the, you know, right now." Well, that's when I learned out that Sharon had a pretty good way of really hiring people. You had to get your replacement, or else you couldn't leave. So I forget who did it, but anyway, I, I did, but it was an enjoyable time we had. But one of the things that always impressed me, and it was mentioned here too, is that I think if any one of you look back 20 years, think of something, you could do it for 20 years, every week, and only miss one week, I'm telling you, that is one hell of an achievement.
That's right.
So I don't, I, you know, I hope we value what we have, because I guarantee you, there's not many towns this size that have the type of paper, the coverage, just the dedication that Sharon has shown for the town, and basically passing on the information, because without that, until these particular technology came along, you know, I can remember sitting out here before the newspaper was around, I'd be the only one in the audience sometimes, and I'd think, well, how does anybody else find out what's going on? Well, word of mouth. So anyway, Sharon, thank you very much. I'm glad I had time to say something. You're appreciated.
If anybody else would like to, anybody likes to, yeah, if anybody else would like to speak, we're in public comment anyway, so we'll read about it. Letters to the Editor in the Yountville Sun, I'm sure. All right, thank you. This is our public comment portion, so if there's anyone else who'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda, now would be the time? No? Sounds like they're having a good time in the hall. We'll move ahead to our consent calendar then. We have items A through F. Is there any discussion or action on our consent calendar?
I move adoption of the consent calendar.
Oh, I already hit. Okay. I'll hit second, I'll second.
So we have a motion to second by Moller and Dorman in one order or another. Okay, moved by Dorman, seconded by Moller. Please cast your votes when you have the screen come up. Is the screen coming up?
Did you go out and come back in? Are you in there?
Yes, worked the first time. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Verbal, aye. Any opposed? No? Okay. Do you think we need to go back out and come back in now for future votes? Because it worked the first time.
Were you in an attachment?
No, it's up there.
I just did it manually.
Yeah, but we didn't.
All right, so we're just going to do a little technology reboot here.
Go back out, okay. Leave.
Okay. On to, we have no presentations or public hearing, so we're going to move on to item 10A, which is the GAN Limit Overview: Discussion and Direction. Maria?
Yes. Thank you. Let's see here, just get this slideshow going. Okay, so, so the purpose of our, of this item before you today is to provide the public some overview of what the GAN limit is and some history as it pertains to the town, and then share some of the options that were crafted with the projections that we gathered in working with our consultant, share the draft ballot language that we already know as of today needs some redacting because there's a word limit, so we'll be, we'll be working on that. And then, just to let you know, as mentioned, I think, in prior meetings, that we'll be coming back to you with, you know, the call for the election and the ballot measure on or before June 19th. So this is an opportunity to provide you with a bit of a primer. So the GAN limit, I sort of, I secretly call it like the stepbrother to Prop 13, if you think about it that way. So the GAN limit set tax expenditure limits on state and local governments based on 1978-79 tax proceeds. That came under Proposition 4. Subsequent to that, in 1990, Proposition 111 came in, and it increased the limit calculation, so it broadened the parameters for how you could calculate your limit, allowing us to use the population of either county or town, whichever one would benefit the municipality best, and then using inflation of California per capita income or non-residential new construction assessed valuation. So every year, any community that's subject to a GAN limit has the flexibility to use this because this new law came into effect. So in, in theory, really, what is GAN limit? So GAN limit says, tax proceeds in excess of the updated calculated limit that is calculated annually, but based on 1978-79 and 1990, may not be appropriated. Then the Constitution says the only exception to that rule is that you can do that if you get a voter-approved override with a maximum of four years. So you can, you can spend more than the limit if you have an override. So there's also some exclusions that the law allows us to include so that we can reduce the proceeds that are counted, and so those include things like inter-fund transfers, capital outlay, debt service, federally mandated appropriations that have to be sent or restricted on certain things, FLSA or FICA Medicare taxes that are paid on overtime. So for us, an example of that is what we, even though we have contracts for public safety, we can still extrapolate what we pay for those and use those as exclusions. So currently, the exclusion for the town is about 1.5 million, and the town is not exceeding the limit. In the last published budget document, it was published at 2.2 percent, so under the limit, so we're really close. We've recently received a new format from the League of Cities, which is really helpful, and it's helped us to call out further our revenue proceeds, and so if I recalculate the numbers, and today's numbers from the adopted budget were at 6 percent, but that's still pretty close. So the current override that the town has was approved in 2014, as I mentioned previously, at $1.5 million. And one thing to remember here is that this was done during a recession, which I really think impacted the projections, and I'll get to that in the next slide. So the town, the override that was approved, it increased the town GAN limit to use all proceeds of taxes, and it allowed the town to use the new limit with the override and in effect, receive and allocate. So that's important to know, that you can, you have permission to receive that and to actually allocate it through the budget process, all collected revenues. And this GAN limit's going to expire on June 30th of 2019, so because we've got an upcoming election, we're here to start the process, to get the ballot language drafted and discuss it and put it before you so we can be prepared for the election in 2018. So an appropriations limit override does not have to specify how the excess of proceeds of taxes will be used by an agency. The amount of the increase requested can be a dollar amount, which is what we have currently, a percentage increase, an unspecified amount tied to an increase of revenue from a specific source, as an example here, that would be TOT, or any combination of that, of those elements described. So this is, for me, this is a slide that kind of helped me understand why I said that we approved the 1.5 million override during a recession and why that's meaningful. So for example, if we go even back four years earlier, in 2010, the override was $900,000, so 600,000 less than what it is right now. And it provided us at that time, because of the proceeds of revenues that we received, the proceeds of taxes, we were 25 percent under the limit, and at that time, the proceeds of taxes were $4.8 million. So we went through this exercise in 2014. During a recession, we probably used very conservative projections and didn't account for all the growth that was going to happen to Yountville, which has been great for our community and our economic vitality. And so we got a 1.5 million override, but now, with the growth of proceeds of taxes, we're at 2.2 percent to 6 percent under the limit for what is $9.4 million, a $4.6 million increase compared to 2010. So that's kind of a, what leads me to my next statement, which is, I think that it was likely that the proposed override for 1.5 million was just too low, given where we are currently. The next slide is a slide that's familiar to you, you've seen it. I brought this before you during Budget Parameters to show you what's happened with TOT. You can see that the peak growth happened right before the next approval, but we probably didn't have those numbers quite yet for true-up purposes, but you can see the amount of growth that we've had. I mean, in 2013, we had $5.6 million, and now we're looking at $7.1 million in projections. So that's a huge growth in our proceeds of taxes, one of the most meaningful ones. So why is passing the GAN limit important? Well, the approved override will position the town to receive and allocate the growing TOT revenue through the regular budget process and allow us to forecast for what we really think is going to happen. The absence of the override means that the town will have to reduce its revenues, and ultimately, because we don't have a practice of having an unbalanced or deficit budget, we would have to then also reduce our services or our expenses. So here's what we know right now and what's important about our approach and strategy for how we approve the next GAN limit and how we approach it. We know that TOT is continuing to grow, but then here's also what we know. We know that hotel rates are continuing to go up. We know that there's a possibility of a new county TOT tax for housing, which is going to increase those proceeds of taxes irrespective of where they go. We know that the future growth in rooms at certain properties that have been in discussion is probably going to happen over the next four years. And then we also know that certain properties have rebranded themselves, and we know, based on all of the TOT reports, that it's the higher room rate that's really causing that growth in TOT. And I've highlighted some of the properties that have helped to that vitality of the town. All of them do, but those are the ones that have had significant changes. So when you exceed the limit, so what happens when you are over your limit? If excess revenues in a year can be carried over for one year, meaning if you discover that that you have one more year to carry them over so that you can potentially avoid a, what you call a refund, but it's really a reduction in your revenues, by, by checking to see if your following year actually has less proceeds of taxes or through a reduction. So if a government entity ends a fiscal think is going to happen. The absence of the override means that the town will have to reduce its revenues, and ultimately, because we don't have a practice of having an unbalanced or deficit budget, we would have to then also reduce our services or our expenses. So here's what we know right now, and what's important about our approach and strategy for how we approve the next GAN limit and how we approach it. We know that TOT is continuing to grow, but then here's also what we know. We know that hotel rates are continuing to go up. We know that there's a possibility of a new county TOT tax for housing, which is gonna increase those proceeds of taxes irrespective of where they go. We know that the future growth in rooms at certain properties that have been in discussion is probably going to happen over the next four years. And then we also know that certain properties have rebranded themselves, and we know, based on all of the TOT reports, that it's the higher room rate that's really causing that growth in TOT. And I've highlighted some of the properties that have helped to that vitality of the town. All of them do, but those are the ones that have had significant changes. So, when you exceed the limit, so what happens when you are over your limit? If excess revenues in a year can be carried over for one year, meaning if you discover that you have one more year to carry them over so that you can potentially avoid a, what you call a refund, but it's really a reduction in your revenues, by, by checking to see if your following year actually has less proceeds of taxes, or through a reduction. So if a government entity ends a fiscal, you're having more appropriation subject to the limit than its appropriation limit allows, the entity must return the excess by either returning taxes or fees. And so, returning them means reducing your revenues, which in effect is a benefit to those who pay the taxes. In this case, the highest revenue source is the TOT, so there would be a reduction in our TOT rate, potentially. The effect of those one-year carryover provision is that the amount of the combined appropriation subject to the limit over the two-year period in excess of the combined appropriations must be returned, as I said, by the reduction of taxes or fees. And so the government entity must return the excess by revision of tax rates or fee schedules within the next two subsequent fiscal years. So technically, you could have a four-year period where you're over, or you balance within two years, and then two more years after that to repair that potentially, with things potentially coming up, or reducing your revenues. So, one thing to keep in mind of what's happened since the last time that an override was approved. First, our consultant shared with us, based on a survey and his connections regionally and across the state, that fixed dollar amounts are not really the norm. So, we have a $1.5 million fixed override right now, and that's not really what agencies are doing any longer. So over the past 10 years, ballot measures have used variable annual growth adjustments based on estimated revenue growth. And this, this sort of makes sense because when I come to you with projections on revenue, I also adjust them based on how they've grown and what's happened. So it would make sense that we would grow a GAN limit override in a similar way, because it's a revenue projection. So, as I've said, most budgets and forecasts are used and adjusted based on inflation and known factors, and so really, the GAN limit is no different than that. And that's one, one compelling reason to choose a variable annual growth measurement as opposed to a fixed dollar amount. So, in the report that you received, there's really two options. One's pretty basic, it's a fixed amount of $4.5 million. An option two, which is the recommended option, which is a $3 million limit annually, but also allowing for the cumulative increases expected to provide over the year, and that's expected to provide us about 16.5 percent under the limit through 2021, '22. 16.5 percent, based on our projections, is still, I think, pretty reasonable, knowing that in 2010, we were at 24 percent. So, one of the things that's also included in your report, as I mentioned right at the beginning, is that there's some proposed ballot language that we'll be working on. And we want to invite members of the council, if they'd like, to help craft this language for the ballot measures we prepare. And we know right now that we're a little wordy, so we have to do some redacting, there's a word limit, and we'll have to work to, to craft that and have it be language that you're comfortable with and that works for everybody. And so, at this point, this is an informational report, we were interested in getting your input, answering questions, and we plan to return to you on or before the 19th of June so that we can stay in sync with the call of the election and prepare for the ballot measure. Questions?
Thank you. Questions to the staff report? Councilwoman Moller?
So I think my first question's for Gary. So, four years ago is my understanding, so I just wanna make sure that I understand this change, that if we went over our GAN limit, then we returned any taxes to the state? And, no?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
Finish question.
Okay, so, I use that as a selling point, and got, you know, anybody I talk to is like, what's this all about? They go, oh yeah, we don't want that, so yeah, we're gonna approve it. So now it looks like what the, we have to do is lower the taxes that we're collecting and not take the overage and give it to the state. So which part have I got right and which part have I got wrong?
So, it's correct that the town would need to return the excess over the GAN limit, the expenditure limit, by reducing taxes or fee schedules, insofar as the taxes are counted towards that GAN limit.
Right.
Funds that come from the state are not necessarily counted and could be reduced differently, so.
No, I, I didn't mean funds coming from the state. It was my understanding back then, that, or four years ago, that anything that we did collect over the GAN limit went to the state. We didn't get to keep it.
Yeah, that is not correct. The town doesn't get to keep it.
No, that was before.
Right. It doesn't go back to the state.
Okay, so that never was the case?
No.
Oh, okay, so.
It, it was returned to the source of the tax, correct?
Correct.
So if it was nine and a half million dollars and we had an eight million dollar limit, one and a half million dollars that was collected from visitors staying in hotels would have to go back to the actual people that paid the tax in the hotels.
That's correct.
So how do you find them?
Right, order the hotels, there's practical issues with doing that, and, or property tax, or sales tax, just to be clear.
But property tax being such a significantly lower number than TOT and accumulation of TOT and sales tax. So the money would have to be returned, and then you would still have to lower the number for future to not raise over the limit.
Right.
I think that's a combination of the two things.
So, the reason I'm, so the reason I'm asking is, when we do put this ballot measure, I'm presuming that we will all agree to something like that this evening, well, we, I'd also think that we would want to put together a pros and cons list, and hopefully, there will only be the pros, and it'll be, starting out, the full council unanimously agreed. And, I think we, I have found it's very clear to put in and very helpful to get our high number of yes votes that we usually do, that if you don't agree to this, then this money is going to be returned to, you know, however we write in that discussion, because I find that very compelling to people. This is why you wanna say yes. Is that our plan, to write a yes/no argument that's gonna go along with the ballot measure?
Yes. The, the argument in support, when this comes up typically, it would be during, when the council calls for an election generally.
Okay.
And during that process and that resolution, you would also designate who writes the arguments in support or opposition.
Okay.
And the council can be one in support. But to your point before that, this does not increase revenue, increase taxes.
Right.
Or dictate how the council spends the money. It simply gives the council the authority to spend the money, should that money come in.
Well, and the other thing that needs to be clarified because of the sentence you just gave, it's critical that the public understands this is not residents' taxes. And if they say, gee.
Correct.
I can vote against this and my taxes will go down. That is not the case. Has nothing to do with that.
And then I'd like to add in that pro, that, you know, in addition to that, we have to give it back to the people who gave it to us.
Right.
So they really understand the consequence of a no vote.
Correct.
So.
So, Maria first and then Steve.
Thank you. So the only point of clarification here that I would add is that we would be lowering our revenues because we're not allowed to spend them, would be lowering them, and then we'd be lowering our expenditures, which would in effect negatively impact the services that the town provides to its residents and visitors.
And I, just to expand, I think that's the most critical thing, which is, we're really asking for authority to spend the money that the visitor leaves, and lowering the rate sounds good, but then we're gonna have less revenue, and, you know, you're in a current budget, and you know, while we have a budget that's balanced, we do not have the capacity to absorb. So I think that's the most important thing going forward, is that you would have less revenue to budget and spend on the things that the residents would enjoy. So it's not a, not a favorable situation at all.
It's a very favorable situation to have this problem, that we get more than we have a limit to spend, and we have to adjust it up every time because we've generated more visitor tax dollars and we have to be allowed to spend them.
And I think, Mayor, to the point, and Maria shared this, it's also costs rise, rates, revenue rise. So part of this is just a natural extrapolation, but we wanna remember that, you know, we have seen a significant rebranding of our hotels and the room rate revenue, so that's resulting in more revenue.
Right.
We've seen some incremental growth in hotel rooms. We're gonna have a conversation later tonight about a possible increase in the TOT for housing programs. That still comes in, has to be factored in under our GAN limit, and we know that we have the French Laundry Garden Hotel has been indicated to be in, back on the stage of the TKRG Group's development potential. So, you know, if all of those things happen in the next four-year cycle, it's only going to raise the revenue. And I think it's really important, the good news is, if all these things happen during the annual budget process, when that revenue comes in, the five of you will have the opportunity in terms of how to allocate and where does that money go and to what program.
Right.
If we don't get it, you can't do that. And I think that's the simplest thing on, to try to explain this, because otherwise it's.
Yeah, Councilwoman Dorman?
Thank you. So, a couple of what I think are quick questions. I just wanna be clear, your recommendation is that the accumulation piece of it is on the TOT tax only.
That's correct.
And, because I have not been here that long, am I correct that this is something that our voters have supported in the past, because that is what enables us to spend the money?
Yes.
From the TOT, the sales tax, the other taxes that we take in?
Yes.
Thank you.
And fairly substantially support.
Yes, I think 70 to 80.
75 to 85 percent.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Questions?
I just wanted to also clarify, if this is correct, that the property taxes that are charged to the residents, owners, are charged by the county and then we get part of that, is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct. Yes, property taxes, it's a complicated formula, but yes, capped at 1 percent, collected through the county, goes to the state, comes back through the county, it's a whole process.
So that is not something that we could carve out and say, well, we're not going to?
Well, let me, that's actually.
This is not a tax increase of any kind.
Let me give you a quick Reader's, Reader's Digest version of your revenue stream. 1.4 million from property tax that all of the residents and businesses pay, just under 1.4 million for sales tax, 7.1 million in TOT. So when you have an allocation of excess, it's not coming from the property tax, because if you equalize everything at about 1.4 million, that means the property tax is where the excess. And I just, that's, I mean, we have to be really clear, because it's not even close in terms of where the revenue stream is coming from.
So, probably can't say it enough times, this is not a tax increase. So it doesn't even matter which kind of tax we're talking about. This is the ability to spend the money that we have gathered with existing taxes, the vast majority of it coming from visitors staying in hotels and spending money in businesses and restaurants.
And we don't even have the capacity to lower property taxes, right?
No.
Correct.
Alright, so any other questions of the staff report? Any members of the audience have a comment on this? Seeing none? Is there any further discussion? I know there are basically two parts you'd like to hear from us on the, the content of the, how do we adjust the limit? If it's not a dollar amount like we've done in years past, you're recommending a combination of dollars and, and tying it to TOT.
Yes.
Then part two is the language, you want some feedback on the language, in case we have comments on that already?
Yes, and we're also inviting council members, we can work offline as a committee to work on the language, so that when it comes back to you in June, you've had some council members work on it with staff.
Okay.
If that's an interest.
We can maybe touch on a couple of quick thoughts if they have, if council has that, but let's talk about the formula itself. That's the principal issue we have tonight. Councilwoman Dorman, thoughts on that?
Thank you. I'm in favor of the formula. I think it is very workable and flexible. And then I have some comments on the ballot language, which I'll wait for.
We'll do that next. Councilwoman Moller?
So, option two is the recommendation for that.
Yes.
I'm total agreement.
Vice Mayor?
I'm in total agreement also.
Same.
Good.
So, language, comments? Councilwoman Dorman, your thoughts?
I think I'm dovetailing with Councilmember Moller in that I, I really like the last sentence that says, "By approving this appropriation limit, no new taxes are created nor will any existing tax be increased." I think it's important, however we cut 25 words, or however many we have to cut, we leave something very clear and concise like that in there.
And then, I have a comment too.
Councilwoman Moller?
So, I, I looked at this and I compared it to what we wrote four years ago, and there's, I think there's only a few words, they're mostly in that first sentence, if you take those out, you're gonna reach your limit, because I, and there's, there's specific rules on what counts as a word and all that, so we went through all that last year. So if you really, Michelle can pull that up for you. It essentially says the same, same thing. I think you've added some stuff in here about vital public services and maybe medical or something, but it's just a few extra words in there that were added in for more oomph that, you know, if you take them out and leave in the key ones, I think you're gonna hit that, the limit, but make sure. And I'm more than happy to sit down with you, but you, there's some real specific rules about what's a word and what's not a word.
Right. Vice Mayor, thoughts on the word content at this time?
Well, I think it is, I don't know whether it is important to point out that, that we don't have the capability of lowering property taxes. I don't know whether that should be stated or not, but I, I think that that is something that our residents and, and property owners are, might be, might want clarified.
One of the things, if I could, when we look at the letters of, you know, the support, we may need to address some of those elements in the support, because as Councilmember Moller has pointed out, we're already pushing the limits on the initial, and we're gonna need to use our support.
Right.
Section and our rebuttal section, should there be an opposition piece. So all of those are good pieces. Michelle shared with Gary and I and Maria last election cycles' language, so we'll, we'll work through all that, if that's your direction, and then work on bringing that back to you at the, probably fairly soon, because this is, this is really important to the town, obviously, and you all get that.
Yeah, we need to see it at our June 5 meeting. Very quickly, some language. The first sentence, I agree with Councilwoman Moller about, there are words that are just unnecessary. Actually, it's all one sentence. That's part of the problem. It's very difficult to read this. Sometimes a member of the public will read this and think, you're trying to confuse me, and so I'm gonna say no because you're trying to confuse me. So, this right now, to me, is confusing. Sales tax generated for maybe something like public services, infrastructure, and public safety programs, something like that. I think that you've cut the number of words in half, just in the first two lines. If you have to have the legal language in here about pursuant to Article 13B of the California Constitution, if that's necessary, then it's necessary. If it's not, sorry, but nobody really cares what article from the Constitution is coming out of. It can be listed again in the argument. I know, I'm, I'm oversimplifying. But again, I'm looking at this from a, from a voter's perspective, not from somebody who can read into the details so much. And I still think that the actual calculation is a little bit hard to understand as it's written here. We have to assume the voter has not read or heard anything before they look at this. So however it can be achieved, right now, does it mean increased by the amount of $3 million in additional funds each year over a four-year period? That's $3 million a year over four years. If that's what it means, okay. If it's $3 million total to cover four years, or is it $12 million after four years is over? Do you understand what I'm saying? To me, it reads $12 million after four years.
Yes.
If it's, if that's correct, then that's okay.
And cumulative.
But it's a little bit gray there. And so, the language, it's just a little.
Sure.
Legal, it's a little financial, and if we can make it a little bit simpler for the, for the voter, that would be helpful, I think. Gary?
Yeah, if I can just add, I'd be happy to work with whatever council members, and the elections official on this. The Elections Code has very specific requirements.
Sure.
On how the question's phrased and what needs to be included and how it's included. And then, of course, there will be an impartial analysis drafted by me as well, that will go in and sort of explain this in very, perhaps not too dry in terms.
Well, and I also agree that the last sentence is, is critical, even in this initiative language. Expanding on what is and, what isn't happening in a, in a argument statement, that's fine. That's, that's appropriate for where that is. But, yeah, you've, you've heard agreement. I guess you need official vote on whether we're going with your recommendation.
Can I have one more?
Yes, Councilwoman Moller?
Comment? And so, when you do your impartial analysis, we have one council member missing, but I'd like to see the language come back and say that the, the full council, or there was, the council unanimously supported, and when Councilmember Durham is back, if he decides to undo that, but I'm gonna go with the assumption that he's probably gonna support this. I think that's gonna be a very powerful opening statement for our citizens to see that the council is in full support of this, so.
Well, and also recognizing, historically, this has been supported by the councils over the last several elections, and by the residents, at a very high. over the last several elections and by the residents at a very high point, if we can include that historical information.
Yeah, I think that information would be included in the argument and support.
Right.
That would be drafted by the council and the authors that the council designates. And the resolution that calls the election and places this on the ballot, this language will come up again in that resolution for discussion, and then at that point, the authors of the argument and support will be designated.
Great, thank you. Do you need a formal vote, Michelle, or is direction?
It's a direction item.
Direction is what we're asking for.
It has been given, I think, correct?
So consensus direction to proceed with option two as presented.
Accepting the staff recommendation and language will be brought back June 5.
Right. Thank you.
And as I understand it, Councilmember Durham will be here at the meeting, you would be taking action on the ballot, so it will be a fair statement that the council unanimously supports.
Right. Great, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Move on to 10B. Thank you, Maria. 10B, Measure A Maintenance Funding Agreement. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, tonight we have for your consideration adoption of a resolution to approve Amendment Number One to the Napa County Flood Control Protection Watershed Improvement Authority, the Joint Powers Agreement regarding the use and equitable distribution of flood protection sales tax revenues, Measure A Funding Agreement. And I thought I would take this opportunity to give a bit of an update on what we did, how it's been performing, and what to expect going forward. So, the main goals for Measure A, use of the Measure A funds for the town of Yountville, at the inception of the Measure A program, was to protect the town's mobile home parks and surrounding areas, Hopper Creek, Velagio Channel, Beard Ditch improvements and restoration for flood protection. This was a picture of the 2005 flood in December. That is the Napa River that is impacting the Rancho de Napa Mobile Home Park. It came within a couple of feet of the top of the wall, and that, in years past, would have flooded the park prior to the flood wall being constructed. For those of you who have been here long enough to remember those days, it was, seemed like a normal occurrence whenever the rain got to this level. The flood was constructed in 2005. It was financed with a combination of town funds, grant money, and ultimately refinanced and then paid off with Measure A funds. We also performed some flood studies, water modeling, flow modeling, on Hopper Creek, Velagio Channel, and Beard Ditch, which had also been impacted by some of this flooding from Hopper Creek. This is kind of a typical heavy rain period on Mulberry Street. Similar conditions on Heather Street, all impacted by Hopper Creek when it overflows its banks. Flooding on Oak Circle, so these streets were made to carry this water in the course of a ten-year flood, which is a rain event, which is an event that can happen, in theory, once every ten years. So, pretty much an average rain, for the most part, or what we have experienced as average rain. Didn't cause an awful lot of damage, but it definitely caused inconvenience in what is described as nuisance flooding. So, left a bit of a mess, took a few days to clean up, some muddy streets. People were either stuck in their homes or stuck outside of their homes waiting for the water to go down. So it would, as fast as it comes up, it goes down, but it does require some patience when you're in one of those two modes. The Fennel Storm Drain, which we installed as a part of the Measure A project, has an intake structure on Fennel, just behind the ball fields at Hopper Creek here, just outside of Town Hall. It runs down Fennel Street with three 36-inch storm drains to an outfall structure on Beard Ditch. This is a picture of the drainage structure, which sits just underneath the pedestrian bridge during dry times. This is how much water is taken in by that intake structure as the rain begins to accumulate and Hopper Creek begins to reach capacity. We also had two sedimentation basins. This one is at Oak Circle and Heather. There was also one more to the north of this particular sedimentation basin on Heather. The purpose of these two was to gather the sediment, the rocks and gravel that accumulate both downstream and also along both these stretches, which would reduce the capacity of Hopper Creek and cause even more nuisance flooding with even less rain. We have found through our past couple of years after this structures have been installed, that it actually helped reduce some of the nuisance flooding. Not all of it, but for sure, most notable, Mulberry, even though we had quite a bit of rain last year, Mulberry didn't suffer the same kind of nuisance flooding that we would have expected prior to the installation of these flood control structures. Certainly, Oak Circle flooded, but it was less noticeable than in years past prior to the installation of those three 36-inch storm drains. And we're continuing to try to make improvements on Oak Circle. Part of the challenge with Oak Circle is that they have some flat surface area drains that are prone to collecting leaves and debris, and when they do, they just don't drain. So, we have led a contract to put in a traditional open-mouth curb inlet, so we think that that will, if not completely eliminate, certainly reduce the flooding that most people who live or travel on Oak Circle during heavy rain periods are used to seeing. So, it remains to be seen what that's going to do. We're hopeful that it's going to eliminate it, but we're going to keep working towards getting that street to be able to be used, whatever the condition, unless it gets really extreme. And this is a picture of Mallard Cove. The crews put up a couple of signs and put a couple of names on them so we could kind of figure out what the sedimentation basins were and what each of us were talking about. And as you can see, it's now kind of home. Even right now, I noticed this weekend, there's still a couple of ducks in whatever little water's left, so it has become habitat. The foliage that you see around both of those sedimentation basins are native species, so landscape architects weighed in and helped us put some vegetation in there that's native to this area. And there has been quite, it's been quite nice to see the ducks and other species kind of start to habitat, have habitat in there. So what comes next? So with this resolution that you have before you, you get to decide that we're going to hopefully approve the amendment before you, because Measure A sunsets June of 2018. At that point, with this agreement, the remaining funds will be dispersed. It's estimated to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $270,000. That's after all of our bills for these projects have been complete. I think it's important to note that the flood wall, last payment in the flood wall, I believe, was February of this year, so that bond has been settled. The funds will be allocated to the Measure A Maintenance Fund, where we will leave them until we need to withdraw them for expenditures for Measure A-related projects, should they occur. With that, I'm happy to answer any comments or questions you may have.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Joe, I'd like to find out, have, when do you propose that the Oak Circle mitigation will take place? Is that, is that on the books? Is that something that's...
Yeah, we have a contract let. The contractor is waiting on the catch basins, and we expect them to start any day.
And then, in the future, is that area and the other catch pool, or whatever you call it, are they going to be dredged?
Yeah, we have an agreement, the council approved an agreement that we have with flood control, and they are able to remove the sediment. The problem for town staff and small agencies in general is the routine maintenance agreement that we used to get as just a part of ordinary business from Fish and Wildlife was becoming difficult and almost impossible to obtain. It was, it, the hurdles and the obstacles that a small agency has to jump through and the kinds of funds that they have to expend for a three-year routine maintenance agreement, we weren't able to secure them in a timely enough manner that we could remove the sediment. And we don't have, for us, it's a lot of sediment. It's a couple of hundred yards of sediment. For the county, their permit allows them to remove thousands of yards, so it's not much for them. It made sense for us to get an agreement with them, and so they come and remove the sediment on a semi-annual basis. It depends on how much drops.
Oh, I see.
But we discuss it with them.
That's why it's changed.
They are very, much more well-versed in what the Stormwater Regional Quarterly Control Board will allow and what Fish and Wildlife would prefer, and we tend to go with their advice.
Thank you.
That was addressed today at our flood control meeting as well, and I was going to report on that later, but costs and permitting processes become so difficult and expensive that there are many program opportunities through flood control that are being underutilized because property owners are saying, "We can't put the energy and money into the permitting process, and so things aren't getting done." And so that would be an example of where we have this agreement, we could take advantage of the availability of flood control in the county to provide the service for us.
A variety of services, Mayor, that's a great point. Even something routine like removing some of the vegetation along the sides of the ditches seems like a routine matter that any capable staff member would be able to perform, but that requires a permit and some knowledge. And because the flood control has the staff and the knowledge, it really works well for us to have them under agreement so that we can call them, they can give us advice on what they want to do, what they should do, and what they can do, and then we help figure out a way to get that done, but it works really well for us. We wouldn't be able to do it without them.
Yeah. Other questions? Two other things, just to make sure that what you know and what I heard today matches. One is, the oversight continues, so if we have some of that $270,000 available over some months or even years, the oversight is, continues. It needs to be reviewed, what projects qualify, but also regular audits would still be required. Bookkeeping, basically, would continue, and there's no expiration of spending the funds except the county auditor who would like to have the books closed sooner than later. That's kind of what's driving the timeliness of it. They'd like this to be settled in some period of near term. So, I'm sure you've got more projects that could use that $271,000.
Actually, that's a great segue, and I want to bring you home on that because by adoption of the resolution, we're being clear, we can only use this for maintenance of the projects that we've already done, and that's why Joe gave you a nice snapshot.
But I brought up the example that we literally saw just recently, which was earthquake damage to the flood wall, which was not necessarily maintenance.
Ah, but what I want...
But that type of thing could still qualify...
Correct.
...in the very narrow criteria of Measure A.
Yes, Mayor, what I would say on that is, we are benchmarking all of the eligible expenditures to those approved Measure A projects, the flood wall being one of those projects. So any maintenance repair to the flood wall would be eligible. The ongoing sediment removal that we created, because the sediment basin's not a one-time thing. So that's why I'm saying, it can't be for a new project, it can be for the maintenance of one of the projects that was approved during the duration. So your example of the flood wall is perfectly appropriate, and it's identified, you have a resolution that identifies our projects, and that $271,000 plus or minus will be something that we'll be able to draw down, as the Public Works Director said, for future repair and maintenance.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that it will be, instead of using general fund, because that need would need to be funded in some form or fashion, it's actually kind of nice that we have a little bit of money to start with, to draw down from, so that, as the mayor noted, should repairs, or when repairs become necessary, we have a bit of a fund balance to start drawing that down. So, it actually worked out very well for us.
Right. Any members of the public have any comments on this? Seeing none? We do have a resolution before us. Is there any further discussion or action to be had on this item? Councilwoman, or Vice Mayor, go ahead. Vice Mayor?
Make a motion that we approve Measure 18-1702, Measure A Maintenance Funding Agreement. Resolution Number 18-3488, approving Amendment One to the Napa County Flood Protection and Watershed Improvement Authority Joint Powers Agreement, JPA, regarding the use and equitable distribution of flood protection sales tax revenues, Measure A Maintenance Funding Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, Michelle, the 10A is still lit on the agenda? I'm not sure if that's why I can't see the voting.
On mine, Measure A is, let's try that again, so...
My motion button's still, it looks like nobody hit the motion or the second.
They did.
Okay.
Can we just say, is all this in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All four ayes, that passes unanimously, so that, we're still having glitches, is bottom line.
Yeah, I'm making note of it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Joe. So I went out and rejoined and came back, and then the screen showed up.
Okay. Were you in an attachment for just now when the vote started?
Nope, I was in the...
You were in the main staff report area.
Correct.
Okay.
And I went out of that, and I went to the main agenda, and it still didn't show up until I left the meeting and came back.
Okay, thank you.
I just rejoined, so you know.
So now, I see that we're moving on to Item 10C.
And I've highlighted the item, is it all highlighted on all my bets?
Yes, it did. Thank you. 10C, which is email addresses for members of town boards and commissions.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This item before you is formalization of the town's Public Records Act response procedures and electronic document retention policies, and it also includes authorizing town staff to issue @yville.com email address to our board and commission members. This resolution addresses text messages, social media, and voicemails, and those are considered records not kept in the ordinary course of business. It does not include emails, which are addressed separately in the town's personnel rules and policies. These text messages, well, as a result, this has to do with the City of San Jose Supreme Court case about public records act requests and people's personal devices being subject to those requests. And it's based on the fact that if a board member or council member is discussing town business on, from their personal device, then that is subject to the PRA. So to avoid people's personal accounts being addressed, we are asking to have the @yville.com email address provided. The town attorney and HR have worked closely together on making sure this language is consistent with the personnel rules and procedures. I've also worked with IT to find out the cost of adding these individuals to our town emails, so it's $14 per person per month. This would be for our ZDRB members, our P-RAC members, and our arts members, and then those Yountville representatives on county boards or commissions as needed or determined by the town manager. So with that, the cost for that, the annual cost for that is $4,032 to add them to that. And then, in addition, if council approves this item, we would all work together with department heads that are staff liaisons to the board and commissions to roll this out in a orderly way, give them literature or some training on that. And that concludes my staff report.
You see, in the report, 24 total new accounts, basically.
Yes.
And did we get feedback from any of the board or commission members on their thoughts about this?
We did not bring it to them, that I'm aware of.
Okay. This is basically to protect their privacy...
Yes, it is.
...and separate official town business from personal business.
What I would say, when we have had brief conversations, and I'll...
Yeah.
Many of them are supportive of the idea, and they understand it, even though they initially acknowledged it. There will be a transition from using, you know, their current email to this, but one of the things that will help is we will send out all of our stuff to them using the new email, so that will help to reinforce that.
Right. Thank you. Questions of the staff report from council? Any? Any members of the public? I'm going to keep asking you until you come up and say something. Okay. Any... Any further discussion, or is there action?
I move adoption of Resolution Number 18-3489, adopting the, quote, "Town of Yountville, California Public Records Act Response Procedures and Electronic Document Retention Policy", close quote, and authorizing @yville.com email addresses for members of town boards and commissions and other authorized persons.
And is there a second?
A second.
We seem to still be, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No? So that passes unanimously. Still having some glitches, Michelle.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing the voting. Okay. Moving on to cannabis questionnaire results. Sandra.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to share you, share with you the results of the community cannabis survey. And before I do so, I wanted to share some of the town's actions with regards to cannabis that were really in response to state law, where the, where the state would begin licensing permits for cannabis businesses at the, at the beginning of this year. So in late 2017, the town adopted and amended cannabis ordinance. And it generally prohibited all cannabis activity in businesses with two exceptions for personal indoor grows and deliveries. And I'll go into a little more detail in a bit. And then in February, the Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee that was, is comprised of members Dorman and Durham on the council, organized and hosted a cannabis workshop at the community center. And there were members of the cannabis industry on that panel, including dispensary owners and private security and the Napa County Health Officer. There were about 100 people in attendance at that meeting, and we heard a variety of viewpoints on whether cannabis should or shouldn't be permitted within this community. So as a result of that meeting, and at the direction of the Ad Hoc Committee, staff prepared the questionnaire that is in your packet tonight. And that questionnaire was released online to the public for three weeks in April. And at the conclusion of that questionnaire, we received 209 responses, which really represents a significant response rate, especially for surveys in town, based on our past surveys. And so now I'd like to share with you some of those results. And as I mentioned, the current cannabis ordinance permits personal indoor grows. And what that means is a grow that is within, indoors of a personal residence being a detached dwelling. And that personal grow is allowed with some restrictions on to where and how it can be grown. But we don't allow outdoor grows. And so what we learned from the community as part of the survey is that 48% of respondents would like to limit its personal grows to indoors only, while 39% of those were open to allowing outdoor grows. With regard to outdoor grows, 50, as I, and I mentioned, that, that applies to the personal, outdoor grows are prohibited. But it also applies to commercial cultivation outdoors. So when we're discussing personal outdoor cultivation, 50% of the respondents did not want to see that occur outdoors, while 60% of the respondents did not want to see outdoor cultivation for commercial purposes in agricultural zoning districts. The town's current ordinance does not permit dispensaries, and that includes both recreational and medicinal dispensaries. And the results of the survey revealed that 59% of the respondents did not want to see a recreational dispensary in town, while 34% would allow it. And with regard to medical dispensaries, 51% of the respondents were opposed to a medical dispensary, while 45% would allow it. And then, I mentioned, the town does allow delivery of cannabis within the town limits, and that's pursuant to an approved delivery application and a business license. And 61% of the respondents agreed that delivery should be allowed within the town limits. And so that is a brief description of the nine direct questions that were asked in the survey. The survey also included some open-ended questions as to share other thoughts or comments. And we received 105 individual responses there. And we received 30 responses for individuals that had indicated they need more information and they better explained what more they would need. So each of those individual responses is also in your packet. And now the council is free to discuss anything about the survey or ask questions of me if you have them.
Well, since we only have one of two of our ad hoc members here, I don't mean to put you on the spot about this, but are there plans that you're aware of for that two-by-six to continue discussion to find out how other jurisdictions are, in the county, are, are behaving with this?
There are no plans at this time, when we had our last meeting, which has been some time ago. We left it that as things sort of unfolded, and some jurisdictions made final decisions, especially if they did allow recreational, adult recreational, or medical dispensaries, that we would maybe reconvene, but not at this time.
Okay. So any specific questions in the report before, or ask public input and discussion? Vice Mayor?
Just one. I wanted to make sure that, my understanding is that the state law says that delivery and indoor grows are legal. Is that correct?
Indoor grows are permitted, and the town cannot prohibit those.
Right.
The town could prohibit deliveries to be made within the town limits, but our ordinance specifically allows them.
Thank you.
So the only, the only thing that's really state-mandated is six plants can be grown at home, indoors.
That's correct.
And the rest of it is discretionary at the local jurisdiction, basically.
That's correct. The only other thing that the town council can't prohibit is the transportation through town. So you can prohibit it ending in town limits, just not transporting it through the town.
Okay. Any other questions, clarification? One question I had, you mentioned something about the language in your question about indoor grows and people indoor versus outdoor. You gave us the numbers, but the thoughts on that. When you say a single detached dwelling, we're seeing accessory dwelling units, and we're seeing conversions of garages that might be detached, or are all those qualifying as individual dwelling units? And therefore, a property could have two or three dwelling units on one parcel, and each would qualify?
I'd have to go look at the language. Gary, do you know off the top of your head?
Yeah, so...
I think it's per dwelling, yes.
It is. It's per dwelling.
So if you have a, you have a three-bedroom house and a garage converted to a one-bedroom studio, and a unit above that garage that's state-mandated to be allowed as an accessory dwelling, and you have three potentially on one property?
Potentially.
And each could grow six plants?
Yes, provided that they are, in fact, inhabited by separate individuals or sep... So the way the Prop 64 was written is that it's six plants per dwelling, regardless of the number of people living there. So yes, if they are separate dwelling units, then yes.
That's just something that we need to pay attention to as we actually craft our ordinance, or if we modify it for that reality. Because we have the new ADU mandate for housing and the ability to convert, that's going to definitely impact us with the relatively small lot sizes we have in Yountville.
And I think, Mayor, based on that, it would really, there, in order for an ADU to qualify, it would need to be a separately and distinctively rented unit so that it's distinct from that of the property. So there are some elements that we can work on, but that's one clear delineation that would come out of that.
And the, there may be this qualification in the ordinance, as it's written, in multifamily properties, which really speaks to apartments. The units have to be detached. So the cottages on Mount may be able to grow within the five individual residences, but not at an apartment where there are shared walls. That could affect a primary dwelling within ADU where they're attached, because it's not a separate dwelling, per how it's written?
Yeah, we're just going to have to pay attention to that, because as people are responding, the, you know, the circumstances have changed even since 64 was enacted, like the ADU situation. So we'll just have to pay attention to that as we go forward.
Other things that the ordinance does is that you cannot take a garage that's used, you cannot take a garage out of commission that's used as a garage. You cannot take elements of a dwelling away that would make it a dwelling. So you couldn't take the restroom in a small ADU or convert a portion of the kitchen. And ADUs are already very small, generally about 300 square feet. So 50 square feet would eat into a lot of that. Will be hard to manage, though, because we don't have a permit requirement.
I know. We're really just talking about the results of this right now, so just...
Interesting points.
Yeah.
Since we are amending our ADU ordinance.
Right.
And if I could, we anticipate bringing our ad hoc committee back for a wrap-up discussion and a determination if there's any proposed actions or changes, and/or if it, based on the current outcome in their work plan, if the ad hoc committee duration has matured and no longer needs to be an ad hoc committee.
Right. Thanks. Did I find the topic where anyone in the audience is prepared to say anything? Still, still hopeful. Further discussion or action by the council?
I, I just wanted to comment that there's a lot of similarities with what happened in American Canyon here in terms of the voter approval of legalizing cannabis. But yet, when they sent out the survey, they, they found the same results that we found here, that they didn't support it in the same numbers in a, in a positive direction that they did when they actually voted for the bill. So there's, there's a lot of consistencies. I don't know whether it's a Napa County thing, but it's interesting.
You aren't looking for official vote. You're hearing direction, that's all, all you need, right? Basically, yeah. Councilor Dorman?
Thank you. And I would just like to say to our residents and our council, thank you. This was, I think, a really good process. And thank you, council, for handling it this way. Residents, thank you for coming out, for showing up. I think it's a really good result because it was a vigorous seminar, and it was a vigorous workshop. And I, I think the percentages speak a lot about what we want and look forward to as a community. So thank you to all.
Need further comment? Vice Mayor?
I was struck when I was reading the, the written comments from the residents who did respond, how they seemed to really be in tune with what we had already put into the ordinance that we passed, mostly. So I think that, you know, there were some, you know, that were more critical or less critical, and we were called idiots in some ways. But I think it was very similar to the way we had all discussed it and come to the conclusion that, you know, we couldn't not allow indoor grows. But we felt that the medical, that allowing deliveries to people who truly need medical marijuana was a, was a justification for that. So that's, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Yeah. I don't think these are surprising. I think what's great to see is the volume of respondents is great. But I think this is also pretty consistent to what we've been talking about and, and hearing. We took a very, I'd say, conservative approach when we had to respond to the proposition when it was enacted in January. And we're still open-minded, but we, this is going to really be helpful as we go forward. So thank you for that, Sandra.
Thank you.
Moving ahead now to Item 10E. A county-wide working group has been requested to evaluate a 1% transient occupancy tax ballot measure for workforce housing.
And let's see. Very briefly, Mayor, council, as you may recall, Visit Napa Valley staff during public comments presented that they were being involved with a regional effort and meeting with all of the jurisdictions in Napa County, the cities and the county, to look at moving forward with a regional effort to increase the TOT by 1% and to earmark, so it'd be a special tax earmarked for regional housing, workforce housing programs and related efforts. The model is premised on something that the voters in the city of Healdsburg recently passed, similar issues that we face here in Napa County. And also, almost, excuse me, also premised on the fact that the city of Calistoga has been evaluating and working on this. And the consensus direction was that maybe a regional approach would be a better way than everybody going individually. The action before you tonight is simply, is rather simple. It's, one, do we want to continue to discuss and potentially participate in a regional effort? And if so, we've been requested to appoint the mayor, one additional council member, and a staff person to participate in the committee to develop and refine some of the concepts and language. Very similar to what we discussed in the GAN limit, the timeliness is of the urgency because to place the ballot initiative on the November ballot, the timeline would require moving fairly quickly for the local jurisdictions and the county sometime in the late June to early July time period. So that's, unless you have questions, it's really, at this point, do we want to continue and be part of the dialogue? And if so, appoint the mayor and an additional council member. Happy to answer any questions.
And, and I'll, I'll add some, just in case it helps with questions. I have spoken to the other mayors and a supervisor, and we feel, and then we're all going to go back to our jurisdictions to discuss it. Some of the other jurisdictions already have two council members that represent their housing fund and housing issues that they were going to be appointing. There has been strong, a strong positive response from our lodging partners here in town. This was brought up at the Tourism Improvement District Board meeting. I know we do have a representative from Visit Napa Valley here. I, I did want to give credit to Visit Napa Valley, who basically is our leader in the tourist industry realm throughout Napa County. And for them to be, you know, basically moving this concept forward, recognizing the need for workforce housing, and to work, to be working with all the jurisdictions to find a new source of revenue for workforce housing, I, I just want to commend that effort and recognize it. The agreement in the discussions that I've had is that more than 1% would not be received well by the lodging and other stakeholders. There was a lot of discussion leading up to the recommendation for that 1%. But it would generate, I think we said, for Yountville, somewhere between $680,000 and $700,000 estimated, where new money that comes from the visitors in our hotels, it's not a new tax for our residents. It would be added on to the hotel visitor's stay, and they would be paying into workforce housing. It would not be limited to hotel workers. It's illegal to designate a single group like that. But it would be workforce housing specific to Yountville and in partnership with the entire county. The other thing I just would mention, say we get $700,000 here in town, and we don't have the space to build new housing. This could go toward the conversations we've had about maintaining deed-restricted homes and purchase one or two homes. But it could also mean we could partner with another jurisdiction who does have space and the resources to build workforce housing, and we could buy into some of those units and get credit for some of those units in our regional assessment needs. So we, those are the types of topics that this committee would be discussing, figuring out how, what types of programs would qualify, how would we be spending money that's generated by the, the visitors in the, in the lodging? So a little bit more background. Any other questions in the staff report? Councilor Dorman?
I just want to piggyback on something you said, Mayor, that, and clarify, there would be no, this is not a tax on our residents. This is, the lodging is going to put a 1% tax.
I just want to clarify, Councilmember Dorman, if a resident of Yountville State in a Yountville hotel, then they would pay it.
Unless they sleep over.
Yes. But in a general theme, no, it's a, it's a tax that will be paid by the visitor. And the same in all communities. I think it's also important that it's, it's viewed as a regional issue and a regional solution. And also, by all jurisdictions raising the TOT, it doesn't create a situation where somebody is perceived to be a less, a value by having a lower rate. So it's a kind of a regional effort, and, and that's something that Napa County has done well in a number of areas. So I think the, the storyline, I don't think there's any argument about the need for workforce housing, because we have a lot of folks that would prefer to live closer to where they work if we had appropriate housing for them to either rent or move into.
Well, one other topic that... Well, one other topic that came up, because I brought it up, was the desire for us to bring in more families specifically in Yountville, workforce families that might have children that could be enrolled at Yountville Elementary School. We've been talking about that for years now, and so this would be a new opportunity for us in that regard as well.
Each community will have some different nuances, but the reality is each community in Napa County has a workforce housing shortage.
Right. Any members of the public? Catherine, you came all this way. I'm trying to get somebody in the audience to share with us tonight.
I'll appoint you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Catherine Haywood with Visit Napa Valley, and I would just like to publicly thank all of you for engaging in this discussion. It's been a long time coming, and we want to just offer our continued support of this effort. Anything we can do to facilitate, answer questions, be a resource, we're happy to do so. And as Steve said, and Mayor, the lodging industry is behind this. It's our Board of Directors that has taken some nudging, but we're all on board, so very excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. Any further discussion by council? Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. So, I'd just like to say, I think this is a great idea to pursue this committee and see where we go. I like it a lot that it's a regional effort. I think it can have a really outsized benefit for Yountville in that we do have a high TOT, we lack space, we have dollars. I like the partnering aspect of it. I think it dovetails nicely with our general plan as we look for places to put affordable housing. I think it just hits a number of boxes for us, and I would be happy to volunteer when the time comes for the committee. I think, well, I know that my background is I have drafted legislation, I've negotiated the kind of agreements I think will come out of this, I've worked on ballot language, so I would be happy to volunteer my services for this.
It's like you would make my participation much easier. That sounds very attractive. Councilmember Moller?
I'd just like to say that, you know, I certainly support this in concept. I don't really have a lot of background on what provisions have been thought about yet. I think that this discussion should definitely continue, and I'd be very supportive of Councilmember Dorman's interest in this. And my concern when you do talk is, I think we've got one shot at this, and we've got a very short timeline. So, I would just hope that the mayor, whoever we do appoint, you know, if we need more time, I'm fine with that. If we can't make this ballot, and everybody agrees, and there's a lot of stuff to work out, because we still have to do a lot of homework to get our citizens to support this. So, there's a lot of little steps to go. So, that's my only thought, is that let's make sure we get it right, and if it does take more time, I'm okay with that, but if you really think you can, everybody can really work out all the details in a short amount of time, then we'll see how that goes.
Yeah, and that conversation definitely, or that topic definitely came up in conversation with the other mayors and the supervisor, that this takes a 2/3 vote of the people in each of the jurisdictions, and that's why messaging and clarifying that this is a visitor tax, not a resident tax, that this goes specifically to the crisis we're seeing throughout the county in workforce housing at different levels, not just low-low or medium, but wherever that workforce housing need is greatest and the most unmet. Very specifically concentrated on workforce housing, the programming still to be determined but must be related, so this can't go into other projects that other jurisdictions find of interest. We feel like this, we're recognizing housing is so hard to afford for so many people, and that part of the congestion we see on our roads is because we have employees coming from three hours away to come to work here in the valley. And so, we're trying to make a dent in that issue.
Because I think you really need to work out and be willing, or we very importantly have to, so workforce housing, we all, I think, can get behind that, but as we know, we can't restrict it to workforce housing. So, how is that really, how are we going to really accomplish that? I think those are really hard, challenging questions. Also, I think there should be some debate about a sunset clause, you know, should it be done? Should it be in perpetuity? You know, you never know. Maybe someday we'll actually, you know, meet those demands, because cars won't be an issue. Who knows? But best of luck to whoever we end up voting on.
Yeah, and I think, Gary, if you have a comment to that, I know that there can be priorities given, like in some cases, public safety, teachers, things like that. It cannot be targeted to one specific business, but there are some, either subsidies or preferences that can be made.
That's right. And so, the town does have a policy in place currently for this type of low-income housing, for very low, low, and moderate income housing, and how those priorities are given. But any policy would have to comply with the Federal Fair Housing Act and also the State Fair Housing Act, and there's case law on how that works and how those policies can avoid discriminating on the basis of a particular group in violation of state and federal law. But it is possible to give some priority, yes.
I also want to recognize that our town manager in his report called out that one of the other topics that should be discussed is cost recovery on administrative time. I think that was a good idea to add that in, because, as you know, any of the staff for the jurisdictions will be called upon to help support the conversations, and that will take you out of your office or whomever it is. So, that was a good call out. Vice Mayor, any thoughts?
Well, thank you. Look how I get the last word, I guess. I want to thank Visit Napa Valley and Mr. Gregory so much. Please let him know that I said so. I think that Yountville is already blessed with hotel properties who have recognized the need and stepped up to the plate and done a great job of, you know, the Bardessano and the Hotel Yountville. We're very proud of them and of our town. We certainly need it, and the idea that we could use this to put deed, you know, purchase properties and put deed restrictions into place in perpetuity, hopefully. I'm thrilled by it. I was willing to raise my hand and throw in my bid for doing this with you, Mr. Mayor, but I certainly support my colleague, Carrie, and I think that she'll do a great job.
Is there a motion in there somewhere, Vice Mayor?
Oh, yes, I think there is. Just a moment. I would like to make a motion that we... How is the motion?
Just scroll it.
Oh, that we appoint the mayor and councilmember Dorman to the working group to work with the countywide working group to evaluate the 1% TOT ballot measure for workforce housing.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll do it verbally again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you, and thank you for volunteering. We'll let you know, because the first meeting's in two days, Thursday at 5:00.
Here in Yountville.
Here in Yountville, that's right. Thank goodness. Okay, Vice Mayor?
Are those meetings, are they open to, for example, if we wanted to just see what was going on?
I think they have to be open to the public, don't they? Like the cannabis conversations were.
Yeah, so they certainly can be.
Violate the Brown Act.
Say that one more time.
Can't violate the Brown Act by having all of us there, right?
Yeah.
A third member could be there but not participate in any way.
So, if a third...
Not even.
Yeah, a third member's there, I would recommend just doing an agenda.
You're not invited.
Thanks.
So, just to, so that there's no confusion, a third member of the council should not be there.
Correct, and the reason for that is the meeting's not generally open to the public as a whole, and so to avoid that issue, to have a third there, it should be an agendized meeting, or if there's only two from each of the jurisdictions, it's like any other two-by-two-by-two where you don't have to do the agenda.
All right, and you need to avoid the appearance that three of you have agreed on what an outcome potentially could be that you would support.
I understand.
So, let's assume that we can agendize a June 5 report out, because we'll need to.
We'll have an item.
We'll need to.
We'll have an item on June 5, definitely.
We'll probably have, there was a second date thrown out originally. I don't know that's firm. We'll find out, I'm sure, on Thursday, a second date before our next meeting, at least a second meeting, before our next council meeting. Okay, thank you very much. Next item, council emergency preparedness ad hoc committee. We've got another ad hoc committee, ladies and gentlemen. There's no limit to those.
Oh, there is, but in this particular case, we'll get started. This item identifies that the council had asked for a little broader definition of what the role of the emergency preparedness ad hoc committee would be. So, we've outlined a scope that includes, basically, the ad hoc committee will focus on education and awareness with an evaluation and update of current town emergency preparedness information and processes, evaluation and review of methods used by the town to communicate information, including prior to an emergency situation and during, because they're different. Also, focus on information content for residents and business community so that they know what they need to do in the first 72 hours of an emergency. Develop a robust portfolio of information for an emergency preparedness page that would be housed on the town website, and then we could also pull out of that and distribute various information at community meetings and events. Meet with our local fire EMS providers, county EOS staff, law enforcement staff, PG&E and town staff, and other cities to learn more about what emergency prepared information content already exists, and how to put that context and that information into place in Yountville, and tweak it and adjust it to be more Yountville-specific. And then, plan and host an annual emergency preparedness workshop event, thought would be one-tenatively for the fall, and this could also include, again, some of the more focused description about, these are the types of things likely to happen in Yountville, here's what you need to be prepared, here's where you'll find information. If you don't, here's what you need to do. And then, finally, evaluation and discussion related to coordination of the role of volunteers from the community who might want to help in an emergency situation. And generally, what we'll be doing is the town manager and management fellow will provide support. This is a good, in my opinion, a good education update where we can look at current information. We have a significant amount, but put it out and collect it in a way, use the ad hoc committee as an evaluation, is this going to be well-received by our target audience? Maybe we've got some really great stuff that staff really thinks a lot of, and you all look at it and go, huh, and how do we make it work? So, we're looking at this from a positive standpoint of how do we improve the communication and knowledge base so that our residents are better able to take care of themselves and their neighbors during an emergency? And then, what I would envision is the annual emergency preparedness event would continue. You may be aware that the county is doing some similar-type events, probably a little less structured than what I envisioned. I also envisioned that we would have our local responders. I also think we might be able to talk about what the to-go bag looked like, what are some emergency provision content. There's some catalogs and vendors that will come up. So, that's what we have. You would ask for a scope, and then the second part of the equation would be if you establish the ad hoc committee to please appoint two members. You have Vice Mayor Dornbecker and Councilmember Carrie Dorman. In their previous communications to you have expressed their interest in serving on this ad hoc committee.
Thank you. Any questions to the report? Catherine Moller?
Can you, we, you did start out, we do have a lot of ad hoc committees, and some of them in the past has required, you know, consultants and a lot of staff time. Other ones, you know, we kind of work offsite or with ourselves, and then kind of bring the package to staff for, you know, comment and stuff. What's your estimation, can you estimate how much staff time you might be putting into this, or how that structure might work?
You know, that's an interesting one to phrase. I would say, I think by including the management fellow in some direction, I think part of the responsibility would fall on the two committee members to do some of the research. But in all candor, we have a lot of this stuff out there, and a lot of it exists with our partners. So, I think part of it would be several meetings to look at and then develop. Management fellow can help craft it, put some of it out in the format. So, I'm going to say it's probably on par with the cannabis ad hoc committee in terms of support, or maybe the library ad hoc committee, but I don't see a need for an external consultant or project. We'll be doing it in-house.
So, are you saying that you think your vision is that the end product will be a booklet, a pamphlet, and a seminar?
I think that's...
Something like that?
What I would say is content that you could use as a booklet, and I'm basically thinking a lot of stuff that would go on the website, so we'd have a central repository for it, if you want to look at it there. And then, you know, because it could be winter seasonal stuff, PG&E stuff. So, we collect it, have it, and then we may be able to develop releases that are more targeted, you know, winter season has this, summer season has this, or here's where to go, and you'll find it all on our website, you know, if you're talking evacuation, you know, there's three or four things to think about. So, I really think, to your point, it's all of what you talked about, but it's not, because I'm really thinking, we want to have the home for the content be our website, but have the product be something that we can pull off and print to hand out when the situation might warrant.
Yeah, I think you're talking about things that the ad hoc committee can handle, frankly. We'll get input from the residents. They're going to have good ideas about how to reach out to their individual communities. We know different platforms are needed for all types of communication, so that, I think, is going to be part of the task of the committee also. Any other questions?
I just wanted to make note that both councilmember Dorman and I have signed up to take a training over four periods in June, so, the CERT training. So, we really want to, you know, educate ourselves so that we can help to educate our residents.
You might get to use a Jaws of Life on a beat-up car to pry it loose. Those are, that's good training.
Burning down buildings more fun.
Yeah. Any member of the public? We have one member of the public left. Do you want to, yeah, way to stick it out, Catherine, thank you. Seeing no further, I'll happily make a motion to appoint councilmember Dorman and Vice Mayor Dornbecker to serve on the emergency preparedness ad hoc committee. The only other guidance I would request is you work closely with the county's effort, because they do have things like early warning systems and communications and some of the things that will be pertinent. So, as you put your committee of residents together and just have that coordinated effort. But I think having the two of you on that committee would be very helpful to us.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You voted for yourself. Good. No voting, no. Very good. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you for bringing that forward. Staff informational reports, do we have any? Nope. Okay. Last time I assumed none, then I was told we had something, so I want to check. Blood control, I basically covered it earlier when Joe gave his presentation on the Measure A wind-down. We have basically a month left of that and corresponding projects that Joe and his group will continue to monitor. That was the gist of that meeting today. NVTA, Carrie, did you have any news from that?
No, we meet tomorrow.
We will meet tomorrow and report out on that. Waste Management Authority, anything pertinent?
We are meeting on Monday, and we have a nice 187-page new contract to review and comment on. They've, their old contract had 12 amendments, and so we're consolidating them all into one new one. And for CalAFCO, we met, what did they, Tuesday, last Friday, and I just want to mention one bill that our local LAFCO, and we're trying to get as many other local LAFCOs to support as well, and I do want to mention once more that Gary Bell is on our legislative committee, so he can chime in too. It's Assembly Bill Number 2258. We went to, and it's actually something that... We went to, and it's actually something that, CalAFCO is our first foray into actually doing legislation. We can only spend 20% of our time and money on lobbying, so we went to Senator Cabrillo, and what this is going to do will be the first time that we're asking the state to actually provide funding for some of, well, all of LAFCO's activities are unfunded mandates. So, we're asking them for a small amount of money, and this will be used specifically for an activity that's related to dissolution of districts that are inactive, because we're being pushed with some new modifications of CKH to get that done, but, you know, all these things require money, so we'll see how. Another thing to vote for, so you can watch for AB 2258 if it makes a November ballot, but I don't, I think it probably won't this year. Is that right? Or what is your opinion?
So, I don't know yet.
Okay. We're, there's a lot of, it might, so I'll keep you updated. So, that's, that's the main thing I wanted to report out from CalAFCO.
Thank you. Reports and announcements, anyone? Vice Mayor is leaning forward.
Well, I just want to make an announcement that May is also Watershed Awareness Month, and I just wanted to bring that forward on behalf of the Watershed Information and Conservation Council.
Thank you. I did want to recognize all that went into the Cleanup Day, town and others, our Upper Valley folks, thank you for providing that service. Thank you, town. Thank you, us, for funding that service. And also, I know folks enjoyed the prior weekend with the yard sales, so that was, it's always something that's enjoyable in, in May. So, just want to make sure there was recognition given there. Any other reports, announcements? Okay, I believe, let's see, our last meeting of the month, so we will be having Memorial Day services. I know the Native daughters and sons will be having their event on the Sunday.
May 27th.
May 27th at 1:00.
At 1:00 p.m. in the Pioneer Cemetery.
It will feel different this year. It will be the first time that Lee, Lee Hart is not there to, to represent the Minutemen, but certainly he'll be there with us in spirit. Also, there will be a Memorial Day service at the Veterans Home on that Monday. Details to come. We're hoping to meet the new administrator, supposedly, in theory, starting in June. With no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn in the memory of Lee Hart to our special council meeting of budget workshop on Tuesday, May 22nd.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Good night.